Hi, I'm Paul Bergerino, Community Education and Engagement Specialist with the Contra Costa County Elections Department. Welcome to a forum of candidates running for two seats on the Antioch City Council in the November 8th general election. Today's forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Diablo Valley, the League of Women Voters of West Contra Costa, and the Contra Costa Elections Division. We're recording these roundtables here in the studio of Contra Costa Television. The candidates are Lamar Thorpe, Frederick Rouse, Carl Dietzel, Mary Helen Rocha, Ken Turnis II, and Monica E. Wilson. We drew lots before the show to determine the speaking order, so we will begin with Lamar Thorpe. Lamar, public safety is probably the issue that's been batted around Antioch the most. How do you feel about the current situation of public safety in Antioch? And what would you plan to do as a council member to address some of the concerns from residents?
Well, with one word, it's just deplorable. I think we could do a lot better than where we have been. The city has been given opportunity by residents to finally figure this issue out. We passed Measure C, and then we passed Measure O. And part of the problem that I feel that we have is that we need to authorize 111 police officers, not 102, because when we put together Measure C, it was 89 sworn officers that we had. And so 89 plus 22 is 111. So we're falling a little short on that. And we also have to deal with the issue of attrition with our police officers. And so we have to figure out how to onboard as many police officers as we can, retire the ones that need to retire. And so we seriously need to look at human resources so that we can fix this issue. With, in addition to that, we have to make sure that residents have the tools and feel empowered to ensure that we're dealing with crime as well. So I'm proposing things like parking permit programs so that folks can take some of those issues into their own hands and deal with some of the crime problems that we've had.
Mr. Rouse.
Crime is an issue of three things, in my opinion. One is ignorance, one is apathy, and one is, for lack of a better term, nothing else to do. Antioch seems to be like a place where people want to come because, as Lamar said, because there aren't that many cops. It's easy to commit crime in Antioch. It's easy to come back to Antioch to commit a crime. I'm not necessarily sure we impose enough, well, frankly, enough punishment on those who commit the crimes. And if we're not careful, we will continue this direction. It doesn't seem to be curbing. I saw an FBI report recently that said there was some reduction in crime, but truthfully, not to the degree that we need in Antioch. And therefore, we need to get tougher on crime. If that means increase the police force, then that's exactly what we should be doing.
Great, thank you. Mr. Dietzel.
Well, I live in the most crime-ridden area in Antioch, in the Sycamore area. So we just had, a couple days ago, another shooting right in front of my house. So yes, we need to spend our Measure C money. We have authorized that, two years ago, we were promised to hire 22 new officers immediately. We have two grants going which promised 10 officers. And the reality is, we're only netted two officers. If we want to fix Antioch at all levels, blight, economic growth, we need to hire the officers right away. Unfortunately, the sitting council is avoiding that issue. We're not talking about Measure C money, but we have to, we have to look the police, the high budget in the eyes, and we have to say, you know what, we need to hire, we need to hire also a human resources officer, a person who can finally hire. Thank you, yeah, okay.
Ms. Rocha.
You know, police and crime, it goes together. We need more of the police because of the crime. But the thing is that that's number one issue for all our community. We've had a survey done, and any time that we go anywhere, that's one of the, number one item is crime. We agree, we've lived in our community, we know what we've gone through. We've lost a lot of police at one time when we had the recession. We're now building it back up, and we're trying desperately to catch up. But it takes all of us. And because of the neighborhood watch, I think that's another way of a good effort of community being part of us in getting to the police help. Community service officers are very important, and we need to increase that so that we can get the police more on the streets so they can back up. We do have them, but we need to increase it. Again, it's an issue that we all are facing. It's, our resources are going into the police. If you know of our $52 million budget, 75% of that is going to police. So it's not like we don't care. We are very urgently trying to find the right avenue to take care of the issue of crime. And we did that by trying to find ways of doing it.
Mr. Trench.
Yeah, the issue on crime, we're all going to agree that the police staffing is low. We're all going to agree that we need more police officers. We're going to have difference in opinions on numbers that the police officers should be at. I know what we were promised at 89, I know where they said the 82, and that's where the disparity is at 111 and 104. My biggest question is, why are we settling for less than the rule of thumb? The rule of thumb is one officer per every thousand people in our city. We have 114,000 people, so to me, we should have 114 officers, plus at least 8% more to handle the ones that are on disability or the ones that are on vacation. So we have a properly staffed amount of 114 at all times. But these are the obvious things. We need to look at the things that aren't as obvious also. We have a lighting issue in Antioch. In dark areas, you have more chances for crime. We need to get our areas well-lit. We need to partner with companies like NRG so we can use the solar technology so we can get our areas, our parking lots, our crime-ridden areas lit properly so people could be safe walking in their cars and walking in and out.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes, thank you. So yes, crime is the number one issue for our, actually, public safety is the number one issue for everybody in our city. As a single person, yes, I am always concerned about my safety and the safety of people around me. We are, in effect, hiring, we are hiring officers. We want to hire quality officers. We don't want to just hire quickly and get somebody that's subpar and have an incident happen. We want quality officers on staff. But you know, the issue of crime is actually a bigger one. It's, you know, we need to look at crime, we need to look at resources for our communities and for youth, we need to look at schools and economic development. We have a population of quite a large percentage of our population is under the age of 18. And a lot of their parents are on Highway 4 commuting, as we all talked about earlier, commuting back and forth. And are there programs available for these young people? Yes, but can there be more? Yes, most definitely. And definitely programs to get these youth in job shadowing or into parks and recs types of programs. But yes, public safety is an issue, but we have to look at the totality of it.
So the next question, along the same lines, I know several of you guys mentioned a little bit as far as job creation and economic development. So a question for you, Mr. Rouse. How would you go about, you know, improving economic development and creating jobs in Antioch if elected to the city council?
Sure, I actually have mentioned this several times. One is, we need to understand what our resource pool is in Antioch. As Monica said, that there are a lot of teens and early, people in their early twenties who are really seeking employment, and it would be great if that employment could be local. What we need to do is make sure they're outlined with the skill sets to support the technologies that we would like to bring in. Solar, possibly an Amazon distribution center, I know I've talked about that. It may not be possible, but businesses that will employ our citizens are key. Bringing business to Antioch that can utilize the topographics that we have, the water, the railway, the roads. We have to attract people to utilize the venue of our city, not just to move out here, to move out here.
Well, first off, we need to hire a qualified economic development director. That is where everything goes down the drain. We don't have any who really follow us up. Businesses are leaving by the busload. I also think, or I will work very close together with the Chamber of Commerce. To me, there's a disconnect between the Chamber of Commerce and our city council and city stuff. The biggest problem is that we don't have jobs, especially in my area. That's where crime and blight comes in. Because the people don't know what to do, they don't have the money because there are no jobs with livable wages. So the economic development director is a number one issue to me to get things started. We also should have exit interviews for businesses who are leaving. We need to know why they are leaving, and we need to document it and have a database about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, I think it's very important to make sure that our small businesses are taken care of because the small businesses are the ones that hire the local people and keep us alive. Second is that we are excited right now because Wilbert is opening up. And maybe you don't realize it, but the economic developers through the city are meeting on a regular basis. They're looking at the property, they're trying to market it so that people are aware of what we have. Especially, as was said, the idea that we have the rail, that we have the water, that we have even the airport, and being able, and possible deport. I mean, we're an exciting location, and it's a regional issue. It's not just Antioch itself. So we have to work together. It will employ people, it will bring the better jobs, and this will improve our economy. So I look forward to working on that and making sure it happens, that the communication happens regionally to all so that we can market our property.
Well, Carl and I beat the same drum about the economic development person. So I'm going to just leave it at that and say, yes, I agree with Carl 100%. Also, what we need to do is look at how we could resource what we have in our city. We have a lot of commercial properties that have been left. We need to get a list of these commercial properties, put it on the second floor so somebody that's starting a new business can go in there and see which businesses were at a location before. The hardest thing there is to start having a new business or to having a second location is the tenant improvement. So if they have a way that they can go in there and look and see what had been in different places before, and they could identify what their business is, they could potentially find a place that is more accessible to what they have for a smaller amount of tenant improvement so their startup cost for their business is minimized. Once this happens, we can start attracting more people into the city of Antioch with their business.
Yes, thank you. With economic development, you know, there's something that Mr. Rouse has touched upon. We have to look at, again, the totality of the picture. Yes, we want to recruit businesses such as industry, as manufacturing, biomedical, and solar, and computer technology type businesses. But we also, in recruiting, we need to make sure that our people are ready, that people are being trained for these jobs. We can bring the businesses in, but if our people are not ready, then they're not going to hire, they're not going to hire local, and they're going to go outside of our area. So that's one thing we need to concentrate on. A second thing, yes, I do agree we need a dedicated economic development director, but we need to take it one step further in the original approach of all the economic development directors of East Contra Costa County coming together. Because now is the time that we need to take a regional approach to our assets out here. Yes, we have, you know, yes, we have access to deep water channel, the rail, and highway, and definitely BART coming onboard, but we need to look at it in a totality. If a business comes to Brentwood, it still benefits us in Antioch. If a business comes to Antioch, it still benefits residents in Oakley. We need to look at as a regional approach.
You know, four years ago, I helped Monica with her campaign, and we talked about youth services, and we talked about hiring a dedicated economic development director. And four years later, we're still talking about it. The fact of the matter is, is that we need to look at tax incentives so that we can attract biotechnology, manufacturing, as well as research and development. I worked hard on the Antioch Economic Development Commission to put those ideas on our strategic plan for the city. I have also worked hard to ensure that we look at mixed-use development so that we're attracting the right employers to our exits off of the new, an expanded Highway 4. You know, we also need to look at a town square like Totos Santos Plaza so that we can get rid of the blight in downtown, and so that we can also help our small businesses in the downtown area to ensure that we're getting rid of the homelessness and getting rid of the crime in that area so that small businesses want to open, but we're also attracting the anchor businesses that are going to keep those businesses moving forward. So we've heard a lot about this in the last four years. You know, it's time that we took the policy and made it real and got the job done for the citizens of Antioch.
Thank you, Mr. Thorpe. Just a little bit, but similar to that question. One of the main issues that's come up recently in Antioch, Carl, has been the property that's been known as the Yard, the BD lumber property downtown Antioch. What would you like to be, what would you like to see happen to that property?
Well, I'm in favor of the Yard project. Two years ago, when I ran the first time, I was already favoring.
I'm sorry, which Yard project, like Yard project is in?
The BD lumber yard, that's the question, right?
As a, I guess the two options, either as a condo or townhome development or park, or park town square.
Okay, I'm in favor of the park event area. But number one issue with that project is the people need to vote on it. Our sitting council and the city manager have not allowed the people to vote on it. There were made votes behind closed doors, but the people, over 5,000 people who collected signatures, were not allowed to vote on it. And I favor 100% that the people need to vote on that issue. It cannot be decided by one person alone by the city managers. That's my position on that.
Well, this is an interesting one because it has divided some of the people concerning the BD land and as what's going on with the city. But you have to remember that we're responsible for what is going on financially. If you take an item like this park, as said, and you don't put money around it like an assessment district or some way of paying for it, it has to come out of other areas. And that could be our parks, that could be some of our social programs, seniors, et cetera, because you have to pay for something that has to be going on. It was dismissed when I brought it up to several people. I think if they had put the amount of money with it, we would have been able to agree or to at least go along. I think the problem here is not so much that, because they are making an effort to go out and get the signatures again, but it's the idea that we probably should have had an open meeting on it. And I agree, that is a fault, and I accept it. But in making the decision that we did was because it was a financial issue.
You, Mr. Trench.
Well, I don't think either I do, is good for that piece of property. I do believe that with those many citizens wanting to go to a ballot, they should have that right because that is the American way that they should have that right. Me personally, I think that area should be a commercial building in a horseshoe shape where you can have a grocery store in there, you can have a coffee shop, you can have an ice cream shop, different things that make you come downtown and stay. There is no grocery store in the downtown area. If this is built in a horseshoe shape facing towards the Antioch Bridge, it naturally becomes a windbreak also because of the way our wind direction is. Inside the courtyard area with that windbreak, you'd be able to have farmers' markets, peddler fairs, different things like that that attract the people into the downtown and have them stay. This would also be a sales tax generating property as well. I do not believe 62 commuters coming to 31 condos is any type of an answer for that piece of property.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes, thank you. So yes, the BD lumber yard is a tricky issue. And yes, could we have handled, could we, as a council and the city, have handled that better? Oh, yes, definitely, we could have handled that process much better. Do I believe a park or an event center is the best idea for that location? Not too sure about that. But do I also think, on the other hand, some type of mixed-use, a combination of residential and commercial there might be a good idea, or a combination of even a small park in that area? That may be a good idea. But yes, I definitely have to go back to saying that we could have handled it better. But you know, it also goes back to, like Mary was saying, it's a financial issue. You know, how are we going to financially be able to afford this park? I like to look at examples such in Richmond as Pogo Park, how they were able to come around and not only raise the money for that park, but raise the money for longevity of keeping that park and being responsible for it.
Mr. Thorpe.
You know, this idea started with mixed-use development. And when it didn't pan out, because the market didn't call for it in downtown, somehow we ended up at 31 condos. And residents were asked to bring ideas through these coffee forums that the city council had, and people brought their ideas, and frankly, they were dismissed. These residents brought their ideas, and they were promised by this city council that if they went and figured out how to fund the proposed town square, that they would allow them to move forward. The city council then went back into closed session and entered into a contract with a developer. And so we're divided on this issue, not because of the issue itself, but because of the city council's missteps on this matter. And so I don't personally support the 31 condos in downtown. I believe we should have something like the Totos Santos Plaza that's going to help bring commercial and mixed-use development to our downtown so that we can support our small businesses and get downtown moving in a direction that makes sense for every resident in the city of Antioch, especially young families like mine.
Mr. Rouse.
Time is fleeting on this issue, and I'm going to explain why. We are already in a budgetary nightmare here in Antioch. So if you build it, they will come, is not the answer. And I've said that in the city forums before. I think that you need to have the money available to do the work and then have it fund itself. If those two things can't happen regardless of what we do with that piece of property, there's no reason to do anything with that property. Antioch needs to pay for it in advance, have it pay for itself after you build it. If those two things can't be put on paper and spelled out, why even bring them forward for a vote? If we just vote to build it and we don't have the information how it's going to fund it, it makes no sense to do it.
Thank you. Along the lines of, you know, you guys have talked a little bit about mixed-use development in a couple of your answers. And, Ms. Rocha, one of the key development or pieces of property that you guys are going to be looking at, whoever's, the two of you who are elected to the city council over the next four years, will be development around the E-BART station. What would you like to see happen around that property?
That's an important area for the simple reason that you can actually, if we built houses there, whatever it could be, whatever different, maybe apartments, whatever it is, you then have the location to go into BART and go to work. So that's what you see in smart growth, and that's what they've been doing in areas where other BART stations have been. So I look forward to the planning stages of how we can improve that area and bring a mixed-use so that you do have some development of some kind of businesses as well as housing, and so that they can use it for the BART, and they can go back and forth. It's a great possibility. It's an exciting time. I think Antioch is changing, Antioch is going for the best. And we have the opportunities now, and I look forward to seeing that opportunities happen during the next four years.
Mr. Trench.
I would like to see it more of a business park area. I'd like to see six-story buildings there. First two floors maybe being shopping, top four floors being different types of businesses, Merrill Lynch, different type of financial services in there like you see in downtown Walnut Creek. That way, people can come in on BART, go down there, work there, be able to shop there, have their lunches there. So we're collecting everybody's lunch money, which we're missing here in Antioch. Everybody's commuting away, we could be collecting the tax off the lunch money. We have the taller buildings, it'll be generating more tax revenue per acre instead of necessarily trying to expand and get more acreage of tax revenue. In my opinion, this would be the best thing to do in that area. We could build them six stories high, even eight stories high, and that would give the top two floors a great view of the delta. Everybody's wanting to bring in executive type of businesses. These are the type of things that we could do with smart buildings brought in using solar technology.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson.
Yes, it is very exciting that this BART station is going to come online in 2018. We now only have to think about the area immediately around. We have to think even on the south of Highway 4, really encompassing the whole area of being a walkable community. I really like the idea of what, how Pleasant Hill has set up their transit-oriented community. They have the AAA offices, I believe Vodafone is there, there's many office buildings there, but there are many apartments there, the eateries. We see people of all ages, we see young people that nowadays are preferring not to drive and commuting in. We see retirees that are opting to downsize and being in smaller-sized homes or even smaller-sized condos. So it's a very exciting time, and we need to really think about how to properly build up that area and plan that area out. And like I said, we really need to think beyond the immediate BART station, need to think on the other side where we have the restaurants and even down by our Safeway, looking at how do we build that up and make that whole area profitable and walkable.
Mr. Thorpe.
You know, when I was on the Antioch Economic Development Commission and was preparing to run for Antioch City Council, I met with Joe Keller, and we talked, had serious discussions about what's next after BART opens. And certainly, mixed-use development is a critical component of what may happen there. So we have businesses, and we have also residential housing. But more importantly, that we have a portion of that residential housing that's dedicated to veterans because we know that veterans in Contra Costa County need housing. And we, some of those folks are living in our downtown in our public thoroughways. And so we got to get, we got to make sure that we're putting veterans in housing. When I was on the Antioch Economic Development Commission, I also was pushing for updating our general plan for mixed-use development in other areas within the vicinity so that we're creating, of course, walkable communities. At the core of smart growth is getting people out of cars and into public transportation, which is ironic, why we would want to create smart growth in downtown because there is no access to public transportation down there. So the immediate area, the immediate area for smart growth opportunities is around the BART station and some of our exits on Highway 4.
Great, thank you. Mr. Rouse.
Planning, okay, is just that. Oh, we've been planning, we've been trying this for years. You know, it's way beyond that now, it's time for action. If BART's really going to go in and be operating by 2018, these things need to happen now. They can't happen, oh, when BART gets here. Because then you've got another some number of years before those things actually happen. So the implement, we're behind, we're behind. And to get caught up, we're going to need to make decisions today, as soon as the board changes. And those decisions need to be actionable and need to be moved forward quickly, financed. They just can't be an afterthought, oh, we're going to, as soon as, you know, 2018 get here, then we're going to do this. That's not, it's just not feasible to do it that way. Do it concurrently with 2018 coming onboard and BART arriving.
Thank you.
Well, I agree with Fred here mostly. The number one issue, if we talk about Hillcrest, is the economic development director. There should be bulldozers and workers everywhere already two years ago. Again, we have missed the opportunity. We're just waiting and sitting idle and do nothing. My concern with Hillcrest is actually safety. We haven't even figured out about the safety issue. How do we cover that? There is no station agent there at the BART station, so who's covering the BART area? Our police, we are understuffed already, so that is not addressed. We're just avoiding the issues. And look at Pittsburgh. Pittsburgh has builders, investors, and tenants already for the area around their new BART station, and we're just sitting there and idle, nothing. Thank you.
Move on to the next question here, I'm going to start with you on this one, Mr. Trench. Do you support Proposition 64? And would you consider an application for a marijuana dispensary, either medical or recreational, if Proposition 64 passes in Antioch?
Do I support Proposition 64? I think it's an inevitable item, it is going to pass. Do I support it? I personally would not vote for Proposition 64. So that would be my answer to that portion of your question. Would I want a dispensary inside Antioch? No, I would not. If there is going to be a dispensary for Proposition 64 passing, I think it should be on county property or handled through one of the medical fields. I think that's where it should be at. It shouldn't be a privatized business to where it could be anywhere near our schools, or it should be something to where, if it does pass, people have to get their deliveries by mail. I would not want a walk-up place inside our city to where people could just go and get whatever they needed.
Yeah, it looks like it's going to be inevitable that Prop 64 is going to pass. I get the medical assets to medicinal marijuana. It being in our city right now, no, we just don't have the capacity because people have to think in terms of, yes, we have this facility, it's going to be, if it's going to be run in the city, do we have the capacity as a city to make sure it is safe, that people are not, are not doing bad things around this facility? You know, right now, you are, you know, we are still focusing on trying to hire more police officers. That's going to have to fall into their bailiwick as well. You know, right now, we just do not have the capacity to support a medical marijuana facility in Antioch.
Mr. Thorpe.
You know, we've dealt with this issue. You know, we've dealt with this issue before when Councilman Tonya Toscarino tried to advance the issue, and it didn't go very far. It is inevitable that Prop 64 is going to pass. The reality is, is that when it comes to issues that are going to shape the makeup of your community and what it stands for and its values, I think questions like that should go to the voters, and they should answer whether or not they want to have marijuana dispensaries in our community, not five individuals on the city council. So, that's my position on that.
Mr. Ross.
Yeah, it's sort of funny that it's easier to get methamphetamine in Antioch than it is to get marijuana. So, I actually think we have a problem with drugs in general. But the reality is, in medical marijuana issues for those who are ill, cancer patients and otherwise, I think having to drive to Oakland or some other facility, especially if you are ill and do need the medication, doesn't make sense. I do think it needs to be regulated as a source of income for the state. It should be taxed. It should be, the money should go back to whatever the dispensary city is. And frankly, it's, you know, as some people say, I only took a hit. I only, you know, smelled it. You know, the society's changed where it used to be, and I think a lot more people have been exposed to it, understand it a little bit more, and a bit more accepting of the fact that marijuana is and will be passed. The law will be passed.
Srithul.
Well, I am 100% against it. So, we should never have anything like that in Antioch at all. If it goes through in November, there's not much I can do. But we should never have drugs openly available for sale. It needs to go, if approved, it needs to go through a doctor, through a medical doctor, licensed doctor. It needs to go through a licensed pharmacy. I'm simply against it. I mean, that's all I have to say about that. No.
Mr. Ross.
It's interesting because Antioch is a very conservative town. It's a very religious town. In fact, we faced with a casino. We had agreed on it, and it was passed even though we had already agreed that we weren't going to go with another two. But interesting, this Prop 64 is going to go forward, I'm sure. We have no choice. So, the best thing for us to do as council members is to wait to see what the state is going to require, what, if they're going to put some regulations, which they were, there are, and then what's the taxing piece of it. If it's going to be in our community, then it has to be far away from our local city and away from schools, et cetera. I still worry about the fact that if they're using it, how are we going to know if they're driving? I understand there's some mechanism like they do for alcohol to breath checker or whatever they do it for the same thing with marijuana. That's the only thing I worry about.
What can Antioch do as a city to respond to climate change? What regional actions such as limiting fireplace smoke or improving transit would you support?
Well, you know, already last night, we are in the process of approving the NRG Solar Farm, which is going to be out on Wilbur Avenue. Pretty much all of our schools have solar panels, and we rely on solar energy. We have a lot of people that walk in our community. I think Antioch is keeping up with that. We, you know, we are a very sustainable community that is very conscious of the climate. And I think, I think we're ahead of it. I think we're ahead of it as far as solar energy is concerned, but there are other things, other areas that we can look to, to be better in that area.
Mr. Thorpe.
I don't think we're necessarily sustainable because our policies don't reflect that. If we were sustainable, we'd be stronger at smart growth because the whole concept of smart growth is to limit people's carbon footprint. And so, if we valued that, then our policies would look like that. I have to point out that the solar panels at the schools were a function of our school board and the tireless effort of our former president, Joy Motz. And so, the city itself, I'm not sure, has done a lot in terms of, in terms of reducing our carbon footprint. So, we have to look at, of course, getting people onto BART. We have to look at smart growth. We have to look at how we can utilize the Amtrak in our downtown area and maybe look at smart growth opportunities down there so that folks can, you know, use Amtrak to get to work, go to an A's game or get to San Francisco. So, there's a lot of opportunity for reducing our carbon footprint as individuals, but certainly our policies right now do not reflect that. When we have developments coming through, we should, we should, home builders have on their own become more green, but we need to mandate certain things as a result in these new communities.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I actually believe the last thing that Lamar just said is probably key to make this happen. In addition to responsible growth, that is economic growth, making sure you can afford things and building them in a timely manner is to make sure that they meet the standards of green energy and a green environment. Everything from the plastics that are used or not used to recycling of the materials into the proper use. Now, I do know that there are some, some contracts within the city that actually require that. But the reality is we need to up those percentages of recyclable used materials into any new construction and in retrofitting existing buildings so that, so if we have a retrofit project, we must be using at least 51% of the, of the product replacement from recycled materials. I think that's a reasonable start in what we can do.
Great. Mr. Srithul.
Well, I'm not running to install solar panels everywhere. I want to fix crime and blight in Antioch. But talking to the issue, you know, coming from Germany to America, the first thing I see in my house is a water heater which runs 24 hours on gas. And in Germany, we have instant water heater. So, you turn it on, and then it starts burning energy. You turn it off, the water use, you don't use any energy anymore. So, we talk about in circles when we talk about solar is the answer for everything. It's not. Just look at E-BART. E-BART, we're getting to Hillcrest. E-BART stands for East Bay, not for electric. That's a diesel engine. We're stepping back in the 1900 century. That's what we're doing. So, let's focus on the real things, what the issues we have in Antioch, which is crime and blight, economic development, jobs. Thank you.
Mr. Ross.
I think you're right. This is a bigger picture than just us. It's the whole nation, and I think we're all working in that way. But last night was exciting because we heard that we're going to be able to take 6,000 cars off the road, reduce the carbon footprint because of this project that we're going with NRG. And it is a positive way for us. Yes, we should keep that in mind as we go on and we look at how we're going to go further on our future building and also look at it as new businesses come in and look for the clean energy. And I agree, we still keep coming, making some mistakes, I'm sure, but we have to go forward into the, at least to reduce what's happening so we don't have the warming as is happening to us.
Mr. Trinich.
Well, to me, there's, this is the type of issue that needs to be approached from multiple different areas. Yes, we need to use solar. Yes, we need to use recycled materials on building materials. We need to use our developers when they're developing the properties, like out of Trilogy in Ria Vista. Those homes basically do not have a PG&E bill because they're initially built with solar panels on the house. Another thing we need to do is, we need to get jobs in Antioch, just like Carl said. You know, that's our bigger issue. Well, you know what? We get the jobs in Antioch. We don't have them driving on Highway 4 as much. That's reducing our carbon footprint also. So, this is the type of topic that, there's no one answer. You need to look at how many different ways you could attack this to take little pieces away from our carbon footprint, and then as a whole and totality, it can make a difference.
Right. All right. Thank you guys very much for answering that one. We're going to go back to the beginning of the lineup here, Lamar. Homelessness is a growing problem in Antioch, especially around the downtown areas and some of the things that happen associated with the vagrancy issue. What would you do to reduce this human problem, especially within the veteran population?
Well, as you know, Paul, I'm a veteran myself, so it breaks my heart to see a fellow veteran on our streets. It's deplorable, and I just have no other words to use to describe it. No one who has served this country should be homeless or, it just shouldn't happen. But the fact of the matter is, is that this is a policy question, and from my perspective, I think that the city needs to implement a no-tent ordinance that's compassionate. The county has two new individuals that are helping in Antioch to deal with the homelessness, to connect them to county services, and we need to infuse those two ideas, put them together so that we're giving notice to the homeless and our public, in our public ways, but that we're also connecting them to county services to ensure that we put them on the right track. And that's been, you know, it's been a big issue for downtown vendors in the city of Antioch that, you know, their hearts pour out to the homeless, but at the same time, they have business, they have business to do, so we gotta make sure that.
Mr. Ross.
Yeah, the issue of homelessness is systemic in the United States, if not the entire world. And what we need to do very quickly, I think, in Antioch is to make sure that we have a consolidated effort to consolidate the efforts of those who are trying to help the homeless. What I mean by that is I saw a bus or van or some truck drive by today. It was a portal medical device company that was an outreach. I'd like to see that plus all the other services be available in a single area so that people don't have to go from city, city, block to block, et cetera, to receive their, the type of care that they need, and especially veterans and most who are handicapped or have some sort of handicap, and they're not able to get from area A to area B to receive the different services that might be available. So, the coordinated effort of all services for the homeless must take place, and we can do that proactively now.
Mr. Srithul.
Well, I think, number one, we should take care of our veterans, no doubt about it. I mean, they should not be homeless. Number two, the city of Antioch should have a centralized service center for our homeless, homeless people. We have over 650 parcels, though there should be somewhere a parcel where we can team up with nonprofit people and build a centralized service center. I also need to say, not everybody, not every homeless is a homeless people. I mean, we have to identify those people. We have to see what their real problem is. Are they homeless? Are they, have they mental issues? Do they want to live that way? Maybe we should even consider building tiny houses, which, I mean, on that same property. But we should take care of them immediately, and we should not all lure them downtown like our city manager likes to do with authorizing showers and clothes hands out in the parking lots. So, we should not do that to avoid the people in downtown.
Mr. Ross.
It's an interesting project, subject, let's put it, because it is national. It isn't just us. It's all over. And I think the federal government's going to have to come in and help us out because this is unique in where our own vets are out there. 10% of our population is homeless, is vets. We talked about housing. This is really an interesting idea because we do have something going on. See, a lot of times, things are going on in the back burner that people don't know until it happens. We have land on Viadora where we're looking at at least six locations for veterans to actually buy, and this is through an opportunity through the veterans, a group of people that are working on it. On top of that, that same group wants to put housing across the way from the police station, another eight or nine units. So, we are looking at the veterans. We are trying to find a way. The last thing I want to say is that we have a center, that we have the land. We want to put 50 children and women over at, 50 women and children over at the Delta Fair location. All we're doing is trying to change that land so that they can have an opportunity for home.
Mr. Trinich.
The homeless topic is probably one of our most delicate issues. I'll start off. I 100% believe a veteran should have a right to a place to stay. I don't understand how someone can serve our country and then be done with their service and then be left to be on the street. To me, I find that completely appalling, and Lamar, thank you for your service. When I say it's a delicate situation, we have two different types of homeless in Antioch. We have the homeless that want to move forward and improve themselves, and we need to make sure all the resources are available to those. Then we have the homeless that just want to get by and get high. There's nothing you're going to do with them. No matter how many programs you have, no matter how many things that you have going on, these people are still going to be on the medians. We need to enforce our city ordinances so these people that are on the medians have the, don't have the path of least resistance anymore to where they're getting their money handed to them so they can continue with their habits on a daily basis.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes, homelessness is, it's a nationwide issue. It's not, you know, unique and specific to Antioch. To touch on the veteran thing, as a daughter and a granddaughter of a veteran, these people have served our country and served our country really well, and the rights that I have wouldn't, I wouldn't have the rights I have if it wasn't for them. And so, yes, we do need to look into making sure that they have resources and housing. I know our upcoming Tabor Gardens, which are being built, a certain percentage of those units are going to be dedicated to veteran housing. We do have a couple of companies have come in that are rehabbing a lot of our rundown apartments, and percentage of those units are going to not only veterans, but seniors as well. So, that's another population we need to think about. But the homeless issue is an issue of compassion because, yes, these are, this is somebody's brother, mother, sister, and that we need to handle with. One area, and I want to touch on this before I get cut off, is our police chief is hiring a homeless officer, and this is an officer that's going to be specifically trained on how to work with homelessness, homelessness people on the street, but how to deal with a mental issue and be specially trained to work with that population.
Thank you. One question that's kind of come up during a couple of issues in Antioch the last few years or so has been the issue of transparency and communicating issues to the public and residents. So, Mr. Ross, I don't know. Do you feel that the city is transparent and does a good job of communicating what's going on, and what measures would you take to increase transparency?
I think it depends on the time of day. It really does, and the, and the subject being addressed. It's clear that the city has made an attempt through their website. In fact, they used to televise the event of the city council. Now, they don't. I don't know if they can't afford it or it's just not being supported because our citizens can't always be on, you know, the second Tuesday of every month. They do record the event, and they do put it on the web for people to see, but to answer your question, I don't think it's as transparent as it could be. Two reasons. One is that it appears that a small number of group really people run this city. And in the short period that I've been involved in the, in the politics, it's always going to be that way. And the second is, we find out after the fact that certain things happen, such as a video concerning the selling of Antioch to possible investors.
Srithul.
Well, I think there's a total disconnect between the city council and the people. There's zero transparency, and I, my pledge is I will change that. I will be available for the people who vote for me. There is almost zero flow of information coming from the city. If you really want to have some information, you have to file a request, and it will never be answered. You know what? Four meetings ago, I was asking about a warrant item very detailed. I was told, oh, yeah, I'm going to come back next meeting or maybe in two meetings. You know what? Now, we are four meetings later, and I still don't have the answer. So, there's a total disconnect. There's no transparency. There is no email answers, no phone call answers from the council member. I really call and email. It's disconnect, we're totally disconnected.
Mr. Ross.
I think that we make an effort, every one of us, to be able to be on call for our phones. We have our 24-hour actually on my phone, and we respond as much as we can, when we can, and direct those calls or emails to the right department, making sure that we get a response from them. Second thing is that we have our regular monthly reports that are put on TV, on the computer, excuse me, for you to pick up, to be able to read, the quarterly reports. We have Facebook. The police has his own Facebook, as well as the city has their own. You talk about the video, whereas the video was to sell and market our city property so that we can get some people to come in and purchase or move in. So, it's important, and videos are going to be used more and more so public can see what's going on in our city. So, actually, we're available, and we are willing to respond, and I meet with people all the time if I'm asked because that's where I want to be, and I'm in the community daily. I am retired, and so, I'm a community person. That's been my job in the past.
Thank you. Mr. Trinich.
Well, I really think that the transparency portion of it is a little muddied. Yeah, we don't have complete transparency. One of our biggest problems we have is we have so much technology in this world to where information can be gotten immediately. Our city website is horrible to navigate. It is absolutely...
It is absolutely, I mean, for lack of better words, pathetic to try to go on there and find any information. These things that people are requesting should be public records that you should be able to go on through the website and be able to get to nowadays. With the archaic ways that our communication comes from our city makes people think that the transparency is not there as much. And as for the city council meetings not being on TV, I was watching last night on my iPad for, through the website, through the city website, so it is on there. But we need to be able to use today's technology to get the information out and then that's going to help with a lot of our transparency issues. And we need a public relations liaison from our city, being able to tell people exactly what's going on.
Great. Thank you.
I'm not going to sit here and say our transparency is great. It can always be improved upon. Yes, I agree, we definitely need a public information officer. Our police department has one and does it so well and I would love for us to duplicate that. I know myself and my other council members, well, I know for myself and probably with my other council members, we try as best we can to respond to emails and phone calls. And I know personally, if I don't have the answer, I try to find the answer and I always let people know, I'll follow up with you within X amount of time. So I do, I know I as a council member and probably my other council members do the best we can to follow up with constituents that reach out to us. As far as other portions of transparency, yes, we put information out there via Facebook, but not everybody has Facebook. Not everybody has the internet. I have a grandmother and my mother that doesn't use the internet very well. We do need to think of ways of getting information to all of our citizens and not just solely depend on the internet or social media.
Thank you. Last, Mr. Thorpe.
Yeah, no, these are critical issues and, you know, I have to say, we have to distinguish between the city council and the mayor and city staff. And so there are city departments like the police department who does a very good job of putting out information. I get that. I think the concern that citizens like myself and people who are watching today are the accountability and the transparency by the decisions being made at the city council level at meetings and the things that they're doing behind closed doors. And so from my perspective, I'm proposing on my platform is that we move from electing our council members from at-large to single-member districts so that you have accountability for the individuals that you vote for. Secondly, I also believe that that will help increase not only accountability but transparency. If you go onto the city website right now and you look up the budget, it's an absolute joke to go through this god knows how long PDF file just to figure out where the expenditures are going. I want to see my council people and as your councilman, I would go out and explain what the budget is and break it down for you so that there is no confusion about what the budget is or any other matters of transparency. Council members need to make sure that they're explaining to their residents what the issues are and why they supported certain things.
Well, we went a little long on the questions, but I want to thank, say thank you to our candidates for answering some of these important questions. Each candidate will have, now have 90 seconds to make a closing statement. Hopefully you guys do a little bit less than that, just so we can save some time. We'll begin with Lamar Thorpe.
Thank you for tuning in and I'm excited to be running with these wonderful individuals. I'm an eight-year veteran of the United States Navy. 14 years ago to this month, I earned the Global War on Terrorism Expeditionary Medal for my service overseas because I have no qualms about standing up and defending America and I have no qualms about standing up and defending the good city of Antioch because it's the community that's provided me and my family the opportunity to own a home, put my child through a good school at Holy Rosary, and given us the opportunity to do so much and serve the community as well. So I'm asking for your vote on November 8th because we do need to increase accountability, transparency. We need to bring jobs to East Contra Costa County and we have to, have to, have to deal with the issue of crime that we've been talking about since, for the last four years. So I ask for your vote on November 8th so that we can put Antioch on the road from good to great.
Thank you.
Yeah, the simple reason I want to run is that I moved here 20 years ago and I've seen this city go from the top of the mountain down to the valley and I'd like to see it turn around. I am a retired software executive. I've worked at some of the biggest companies in the valley and I know I can use my business skill to turn this city around. I want to commit that this is a full-time job for me and being retired, that I can do 24 hours a day if necessary to do this job. I do believe in transparency, even though corrected on the video issue, that's not transparent enough. I think that I will cause transparency. I'm not the same kind of player and I'm not in the good old boys' club. And if you're looking for a change, if you're looking for a serious change, vote for me on November 8th and we'll make that change together. Thank you.
Well, I'm a senior citizen and I live in Antioch since 1989. That's my second time I'm running. I still cannot sit on the sideline because we're going down, just down and down, not up. I want to say thank you very much to the Women League of Voters for having us. Thank you for all the candidates here for stepping up, even we might disagree on certain issues. I have to say, I'm not running for that position to jump chip as soon as the supervisor position comes along, all right? And to the people, I want to say, please keep in mind, we have the great opportunity to take our city council back this November by getting three new people and so please be aware of that and go out and vote. We all deserve a safe city to live in, a clean city, a city which is growing economically, a city which promotes jobs growth, attracts companies, and pays living wages, a city we all can be proud of. So thank you very much for having me and vote for me.
Okay, over the years, I've been involved in the community and I've been honored to be mayor, city council, and school board member. I've had the pleasure of working in the community. I've been even named as the Citizen of the Year, excuse me, community, again, let's go back. I've been named by the Contra Costa Council of Women's Commission as the citizen, I keep wanting to say citizen, but it's not. It's the women's, actually, Woman of the Year for this year, 2016, because of community services I've been involved with. And I've worked in many, many years in different nonprofit organizations, serving people because that is my field, that's where my heart goes. I hope to continue serving the community. I think, and you all need to know, is that it's very important and I want to work on this police issue. I want to work on CSOs. I want to bring back more. I want the code enforcements to be so that we can take care of that blighted area where the homes have been left alone by absentee landlords. I want to show, share with you that I think I have the experience, I have the knowledge, I work well with people, and I work with the community at large. So I look forward to your, hopefully for your vote this November 8th election and I thank the Women's League for being the sponsor and working with us and all the members that are here. And I'm sure they will continue doing that because we have one more to go. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody for today as well, Paul, Women League of Voters, the gaffe guy that did put the tape on my skin. That was very nice of you. I greatly appreciate that. I grew up in Antioch. I'm an Antioch native. I grew up just off of Lake Alhambra. I grew up in the town of Antioch. I've watched it struggling to become the city of Antioch. I want to be part of the directional change of getting Antioch into the city in which we deserve to have. We deserve to have a good city that has the community feel that the town that I grew up in. That is what I want to be a part of. Last year, I was the Citizen of the Year. Yes, Mary was there for it. Thank you very much. I was Citizen of the Year by the Chamber of Commerce. Do a lot of things within the city. I've been on the Economic Development Commission for the past two years. I served with Lamar on there. And what I would really like to see out of all of this is get our communication back in line, get our budgetary items back in line, fiscal responsibility back in line with where it should be so this city can move forward in the direction that we want. One thing with me, you may not always agree with me, but you will definitely know what my position is on any agendized item. Vote for me on November 8th. I greatly appreciate it. My name is Kenny Turnage.
Ms. Wilson.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Thank you to my fellow candidates, to Paul, the League of Women Voters, for having us here tonight, this evening. I moved to Antioch in 2006. I loved this city shortly after I moved in here and in 2008, I decided to invest in this community and I purchased a home. Unfortunately, that was around the time of the economic downturn and I lost my job. I struggled, but I got involved in the city and I was still able to maintain and keep my house during this time when I was struggling. My experience during the economic downturn, I was able to translate that into working on the city council. I've been happy to see that we've been able to bring our workers back to a five-day work week. We have increased our reserves and we're starting to pay down our unfunded liability. We've also finally annexed the Wilbur Corridor and we're starting to develop more down on the south end of the city. Yes, we've accomplished a lot, but there are a lot of things that we need to do. And I'm looking forward to continuing that work, continuing the work with public safety, continuing work with economic development, and continuing work on trying to make, bring this city together. And everybody needs to know that Antioch is on that verge of being a great city. So I want to be there for that and I want to see our city continue to grow and I ask for your vote on November 8th and I thank you again for allowing me to be here.
That concludes our forum of candidates running for two seats on the Antioch City Council in the November 8th general election. Once again, the candidates are Lamar Thorpe, Fredt Grous, Carl Ditzel, Mary Helen Rocha, Ken Turnage II, and Monica E. Wilson. For more information on the candidates, visit the website votersedge.org. To view this broadcast online, go to wwwcontracostatv.org. I'm Paul Bergerino. Thank you for watching and don't forget to vote on November 8th.